I'm on call, meeting to order, and if you'll stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our announcement tonight, for those of you that do not know, our mayor has ended up in the hospital this afternoon. So we think it's kidney stones, and hopefully that's bad enough, but we hope it's not anything worse. So I asked him, should we cancel the meeting? And he said, no, it needs to go on. The show must go on. Show must go on. Okay. Um, Ryan Williams?
Here.
Jennifer Massey?
Here.
Mark Hickman?
Here.
Zach Jeffrey?
Here.
Jack Paul?
Here.
Kyle Marks?
Here.
Okay, the first thing I have on the agenda is we have a representative here about the overpass. Who's going to give us some information is, is that you? Okay.
Nathan Zimmerman.
Nathan, what was the last name? Nathan Zimmerman, okay. Nathan, if you want to come up to the microphone so everybody can hear you. And we'll let you tell us everything you know, and that way you won't have to stay if you don't want to.
Yeah, we're just kind of giving a little bit of an update. I did have a little presentation, but we don't, we don't have to go over it. It was just going to be kind of maintenance of traffic and our plan for like the lanes and different things. And just kind of showing what the final prep and it'll look like. But yeah, we, where we stand at right now, we're kind of still looking, I think, the mid, late April part of getting finished. We're, right now, we're, we're about seventy-five percent way through the job. And we've got, oh, mainly a lot of paving and looking for some warmer weather to try to get some work, that's what we need, but.
Are you guys going to partially open any, I mean, I know that their new on-ramp is open, but is there other phases where you guys are going to slow this, open this slowly? Or is it going to be one big, here you go, Mayflower?
It's, it's almost going to be one big, here you go, Mayflower is what it's going to be. The only thing that's going to hold us up is we have to, we have to tear out the, the old Highway eighty-nine, the overpass that kind of, that crosses over up there by the Exxon. To build our new on-ramp where it connects from Highway eighty-nine where we're up high going to the interstate. And so what we'll have to do temporarily while we build that is we'll have to detour traffic coming east. We'll have to detour them all the way to by the cemetery. And they'll have to loop back around. If you're trying to get on the interstate or going, you, you basically, if you're on Highway eighty-nine coming over the bridge, you won't be able to get to three sixty-five to turn left.
Got you.
So we'll have to detour around through town temporarily when we do that.
So they'll have to go all the way down to the cemetery to come back around to the light and turn left to get to Harps, like if you're coming from eighty-nine?
Correct.
Oh, wow.
How long do you think that will take?
It's, it, it shouldn't take but a few weeks depending on, you know, the weather, of course, you know, construction related. But they pretty much stockpiled the dirt. That's the big mound of dirt we see behind the Exxon. Most of it's right there, so they'll just kind of have to, we'll have to scarify the old road, kind of move that in, you know, put it in lifts. And then we'll have to schedule in our gravel and our asphalt and our curb and stuff like that and finish up right on top there.
Nathan, I remember whenever you guys presented a couple of years ago, like you're not tearing out that old highway, just the elevated parts, I guess, correct? The other part can stay under the subfield, in other words, and just fill over the top of what's there, or does that speed up the process?
Yeah, one, one thing we were going to try to do to help speed up some of the process that I think we're going to wind up doing is, uh, Tanner is actually my, he's, he's over like the bridge and structures on the show. And I'm over the roadway. But what we're, what we'll wind up trying to do to help save a little bit of time, which I think will help us put it in, in that mid-April range, if not, we may go a little longer. But what, what we'll have to do, I think, to help is try to shift traffic onto the bridge after we get to the, the deck four and a little bit more completed and some of the road built like in between the two bridges. We'll have to do some paving in the intersection by the, the traffic signal along the lake over here. And when we get that done, we'll, we plan on trying to set some barrier walls on the, the railroad bridge. And try to, where we can pull traffic over and we can start working to get rid of the, the bridge, the old bridge structure. That'll kind of sort, like save us a little bit of time there, rather than waiting for the entire bridge to get down, we pave everything, and we put traffic on the new bridge. And then start on removing the existing bridge structure, but.
Is, uh, will, will like the main street off-ramp of the overpass be completed before, I guess, before you close off the old bridge?
Yeah.
So instead of going all the way to cemetery, some people may opt to get off there on the main street.
Right, right. Some people can do that.
That sounds way better.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't, because I live right off of Main Street, but yeah, that's.
Be hard getting in and out of your neighborhood.
Turn right, you gotta turn right.
Anything else? Any questions?
Is there, one more quick, there, there's not going to be an interest to Main Street, is there, from, from that? Is there that, or?
Yes.
What, what's that?
There's on and off of Main Street right there.
Okay, so you'll be able to jump right on the.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yep. If you're driving over the railroad tracks, there'll be, on the right side, it'll be a right turn only. And you'll be able to loop around to, down to Main Street right there.
So theoretically, then you could go north and come back main. Or if you're going on the highway, yeah, you could go across the tracks, the second crossover, yeah.
Yep.
We just, and I, I know you, I think you gave Danny that, is that correct?
Yeah, I just had a little PowerPoint, but.
You know, we might want to put some stuff out there as that comes up to kind of, and we've been doing it, I think Chief Hunter's been doing a good job of that, posting on Facebook and things about traffic pattern changes and things like that.
Yeah, whenever we get closer to moving stuff around, we can get some updates and stuff.
Sounds good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Nathan. Be safe out there. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Hey, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December twenty-seventh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next, we have the December financial statements.
I'll make a motion, we approve the December financial.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jack Paul?
Yes.
Kyle Marks?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing we have on our agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one. And I will have our city attorney kind of explain that to you. But first off, we, I think we need to make a correction on that one. Um, Jack Paul, I believe, is Ward Two, Position Two.
I bet that's right, yep, because there's three, there's too many threes, aren't there?
Too many, too many threes.
Yep.
So with that.
Good catch, sorry.
We'll make that correction. Okay.
All right, yeah, everybody, this is just, it's ordinance one, it's our ord, organizing ordinance that just has the different sections. And, um, and section A is always a ratification of anybody that was elected the year before. So if there's any other corrections on that, we'll, I'll make that, um, when, on the final printing of it. Um, then there's the calendar on section A, that's the appendix on, it's on the back. Um, I don't think we run up on any holidays. These are the fourth Tuesday of the month, um, except for, uh, December. It's, it's the day right after Christmas. That's not really a holiday, but that's inconvenient to anybody. This is, I mean, we might talk about that as it gets closer, but, uh, always the fourth Tuesday. Um, we had some discussion earlier at the office about, uh, whether seven o'clock is still the best time. Uh, we could maybe talk about that as we go along tonight, but that's, uh, but anyway, section A is just the, the, the schedule there. Section B, C, and D are all just the, the housekeeping rules for how we operate the meeting. Um, there's, uh, section C is the, the format of the meeting. It has not changed in years past. I mean, it, it, it says what we do if the mayor's not here, for example. Um, uh, section D is if the meeting has to be canceled or if we switch to some kind of Zoom format or whatever, that is, that is allowed. Um, and that's, that's pretty, that's pretty much it. There's an emergency clause, so, uh, I, I kind of regret doing it as an ordinance. We could do it as a, as a resolution instead because the, the ordinance takes so much to pass. But, uh, that's the first step we have to do is do a motion and, and a second to waive the, the three readings.
Since I moved, we suspend the rules, waive the second, third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh one, and read the entire ordinance, uh, by title only. Uh, read the ordinance by title only and vote on ordinance twenty twenty-three oh one after its initial reading.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second and third reading. Read ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one by title only.
It's the ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh one, ordinance organizing the city council and meeting schedule for year two thousand twenty-three enacted annually pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated fourteen forty-three five oh one.
Do I have all in favor, aye, for the suspension of the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
That's okay.
I'm gonna do it as a resolution next year.
Okay.
Be a lot easier.
Okay, so now that we've suspended the rules, does anyone desire to place the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one up for adoption?
I make a motion to adopt twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one. Um, Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey? Mark Hickman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jack Paul?
Yes.
Kyle Marks?
Yes.
Okay, and like our city attorney said, this does have an emergency clause.
I move that we accept the emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jack Paul?
Yes.
Kyle Marks?
Yes.
So ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one has passed. Um, the next thing we have on our agenda is resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one. And it is the TAP grant funding. And, um, I believe we have some people here that can answer any questions that we might have on that. You want to read the title?
Yeah, I'll read the title first. This is, uh, resolution two thousand twenty-three oh one. Resolution authorizing execution of agreement of understanding in appropriating municipal funds to fulfill participation requirements in federal aid transportation alternative program, TAP grants approved in two thousand twenty-two. That's a big mouthful. I'll, I'll explain what that is, guys. This is sort of coming full circle from grants that were, uh, approved. I think the original one was two thousand sixteen. I think you guys are nodding, okay. Um, and at that time, all we were thinking about was that it was an eighty-twenty grant, eighty-twenty grant. We now know what the numbers are. Uh, we, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with these guys from, from half Metro Plan, um, RDOT. Uh, so what you see there on the bottom right is Mayflower's contribution would be up to eighty-nine thousand five hundred if they use the full amount of the allocation. Um, if they're under budget, then it won't be that much. Uh, if they're over budget, we'll, we'll talk again. Um, but between the, the two grants that were approved from RDOT and Metro Plan, you see the breakdown. And then Mayflower's contribution will be eighty-nine thousand five hundred. Um, there are some smaller costs, uh, like engineering studies, deposits, things like that, that are not covered by the eighty-nine thousand. There's some, some, some small expenditures. So section two, you see in there, uh, says that any ancillary costs may be required. The, the mayor would have authority to sign off on those, uh, up, up to until five thousand dollars, uh, and then we would get further approval with the city council.
Now, this is for the sidewalk project?
Sidewalk, yes.
Crystal's not here. My question about this one was, don't we have that money set aside in the matching funds account?
I believe that is correct, yes.
I was told that the money's in the bank. It's just, it was, it's been saved for this project for more than twelve months.
So it's just, we just wanted everybody to just have a fresh set of eyes on it now that we know what the actual dollars are.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
I'll say.
Is that Mike?
So are we going to start it? Is that why we need a resolution? The project we need to start it?
Well, the first, yes, we have to sign an agreement of understanding that requires the city to do several things. Like one, one thing is to assign a, a full-time worker to be sort of the liaison between the engineers and things like that. So that, that's one of the things that we do. So it's, it's financial commitment and also just here's our list of responsibilities that we're going to do. So, um, the way this all came out is we, we, we scheduled a meeting to look at this agreement of understanding that I had never seen, mayor had never seen. And we're like, ooh, let's just, let's just breathe and take a minute and just kind of restart this. And so that's, that's what the, this resolution, um, just, just gives new authority to sign off on that.
And we have Casey from Metro Plan and Mark Watson from the, Mike Watson, I'm sorry, from the engineering firm to answer any questions that you might have on that.
It's going to run from the school to?
The church. There's a sidewalk in front of the church near eighty-nine. I don't know the name of that church. It's a Baptist church.
First Baptist?
It was Baptist. We'll start there and go to the school.
Okay, so it'll be on that side of the road.
Well, that has been determined.
To the middle school, right?
Yes, to the middle. And that's what I was going to ask as far as right-ofways and all of that, is that cost, is it going to be in the highway right-ofway? Or if we have to purchase right-ofways from individuals, is that all considered in this total cost, or is that?
The plan is to put it all in the right-ofway of Highway eighty-nine as it currently exists. There may be certain areas because of grade or ditch or something like that, we may have to move out. We'll try to do that with easements. They will take easements now for sidewalks to be placed in easement, so we'll try to do that. It does not include the right-ofway purchase. The, the number you're approving tonight does not include that. But you would, you'd basically know that before you got to the point of even bidding the project. We'd have to know that before the project was bid.
Sure, and will that process potentially be easier once we absorb that section of Highway eighty-nine and it becomes Miller Street? That way, it's no longer RDOT property, but it's City of Mayflower property as far as the easement on that highway?
No, because RDOT is, it's federal money being involved in this, and they will still have to sign off on everything. They control how you purchase the right-ofway and how you acquire the right-ofway. So even if it's the city, you know, city street at that time, they will have the authority over that right-ofway because of the sidewalk project.
And if we don't put that sidewalk on the other side of the street, we're going to risk kids crossing the street right at that ninety-degree elbow. You said you didn't know which side it was on.
Well, down in that area, it will definitely be on the south side because the church down there has already put a sidewalk in in front of the church near the middle school.
Right.
So yes, they will not be crossing, they would cross at a runway somewhere before they got to there. But somehow, somewhere they have to cross the street. Is it at the railroad track? Is it before the railroad track? Is it west of the railroad track?
That's, what, what does the crossing look like at a railroad track? Will there be a pedestrian crossing built in at the railroad track as well?
Yeah, the triangle path one.
No, they will not.
So as it stands, it'll come up in front of a vineyard on the same side of the vineyard and just keep a wall straight up and cross over the street.
I have a question. The church we're talking about is the new church out there by the school. Is that correct?
Well, I'm actually talking about two churches.
Two churches.
It starts at the Baptist church, you tie into the church that's out by the middle school sidewalk that's already there. Then you'll pick up with some more sidewalk now. And that's all dependent on we're being able to do that much sidewalk with the funds available, too. The project was originally grant, they received grants in twenty sixteen. Costs have gone up tremendously since that time. So we'll do as much as we can with the money to get it as far that way as possible.
You're going to start on the school end or this end?
That, I mean, we could do either one. I mean, we're going to survey the entire route and we could start at either end and bid it that way. That way, even if, if we can't do it all at this time, the planes are ready to go, and you'll be able to bid it as soon as you have some more funds available. And you're right, starting at school probably makes more sense because you've got a subdivision right there that it would pick up, uh, the vineyard, I believe. Is that right?
And I could imagine you'd have more middle school and high school students walking home than elementary students at, at the, this east end, walking home.
And the sidewalk across the street from the big Baptist right here.
There is.
For a short period.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one. Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jack Paul?
Yes.
Kyle Marks?
Yes.
Okay, um, the next item we have is resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two. And it is amending the twenty twenty-two budget. Um, Dale Carter had planned to be here tonight, but he lives up in northwest Arkansas and decided he probably shouldn't try to come. And I think Crystal probably decided she needed to get on home also, so.
I'll make a motion, uh, we accept resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
A second.
You want to read the title?
Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh two, resolution providing for an amendment to resolution two thousand twenty-one dash nineteen. The budget resolution for the City of Mayflower, Arkansas for the year two thousand twenty-two.
Do we have any questions?
On the water, how much is in there full of water?
Um, it looks like in this, in this, the water did not have to be amended. This was just to amend our, our budget from twenty twenty-two.
Basically, the bu, the budget that we went by in twenty twenty-two, anything spent above the budget, this is basically a housekeeping piece that we have to, for audit purposes. Uh, we spent an extra three hundred thousand, but our income was greater than our budget income as well, so it, am I correct in that?
Correct. I don't remember a time that we've not had to amend the budget, whether we spend less, spend more.
So there's some amendments to be done down the road.
It is a cleanup. We have to, we've already passed our twenty twenty-three budget, and we couldn't do an amendment until year end to see exactly what we did spend. And so this is, this is just pretty much a housekeeping issue for us.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? Any, any other questions? Brian Williams?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jack Paul?
Yes.
Kyle Mark?
Yes.
Okay, the next item I think we have on our agenda is the tearing down of an old storage building that's behind City Hall. And all of the records, uh, we had shredded. That was part of, um, a motion that we had back a few months ago. It's how we were gonna get the records destroyed and we had them shredded. So everything that's of any value at all is out of the old storage building. And I believe, um, I believe Jimmy's ready to tear the building down. We just need your okay on it. He's got the wrecking ball out there.
Are you, are you tearing it down?
So does this require a resolution or is it just an eye vote, kind of a discussion?
It's, it's just, it's just a, a voice vote on that so that the council is aware. We have it in the minutes so the auditor can see that, you know, the building is of no use to us.
It is not. I was in there when we were pulling those records out and it's, uh, pretty dilapidated.
Right.
I make a motion to give, uh, Mr. Joe authority to turn it out. Jimmy Joe, right?
Jimmy Joe, yes, it is. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, the other thing we have on the, the agenda was resolution, um, twenty twenty-two dash eighteen and it was the increase, um, of the water rates. Community water had, had raised our wholesale cost and we were just asking to pass that along to the customers along with the ten cent clean water act that, that we pay.
Per meter.
From meter.
Ten cents a month.
Yes, yes.
I make a motion to adopt twenty twenty-two dash eighteen.
Second.
Okay, was that you, Kyle?
Does that take in the, the acts, uh, what is it, six oh five?
Um, the Act six oh five was where the city council members had to take the eight-hour course. Is that it? Is that what I'm thinking about?
Well, and then there was reserve money for the, uh, what am I trying to say here?
It's the infrastructure money is what the ten, the ten cents is, I believe. Right, and, uh, am I correct? Yeah, I think you're more knowledgeable on this than... The ten cent imposed, that's the safe drinking water fee? Is that not, that goes toward infrastructure solely in compliance with that six oh five, correct?
No, that, that ten cent goes to the Arkansas Department of Health for their operations, their, for their, their funding. For, for doing samples, uh, coming to select samples, uh, uh, engineers. It's just the broad council, the broad revenue, they don't rate. It's required by people when I'm working.
Yeah, and that's just a, that's just a pass through. We collect it, but we don't keep it.
So just to clarify, that's what I was gonna clarify is that the thirty cents per thousand gallon and the ten cent per meter is all passed through. We're just collecting that and it's going right back because our rates have gone up.
Right.
Just to clarify.
Right, because community water raised our wholesale rates that amount. That'll go to community water and the ten cents will go to the Arkansas Department of Health. So it's not anything that we get to keep in our coffers.
Thank you.
The ten cents had been absorbed for the last couple of years.
It was the last time we voted on this. We absorbed the ten cents per meter, I do recall that.
Just sort of a...
Right.
We did absorb that.
In that, yeah. Because now it's a passing through.
Yep.
So Zach will cover all our expenses then?
That will cover the increase that community water has made to us for our wholesale water and that will cover the ten cents that we are having to pay to the Department of Health, Arkansas Department of Health.
So it won't have nothing to do with the increased rates or anything?
Our, our rates did increase, but that's, it's, that's gonna be the increase to the customer, the thirty cents per thousand gallons, I believe it was, and the ten cents per meter.
What's our average usage rate? About four thousand gallons, is that a difference?
In, in that report there of this month, um, in next month's report, I have a, an average of twelve-month average in there along with our water loss and how much water we purchase from community water and what we sell. I have to wait until this, uh, breeding cycle is completed, uh, before I can get those numbers together.
This will cover us till they go up again. They'll go up again before you know it, but this, this will get it.
This is something we pretty much have to revisit every year. If I'm right. If this comes, this, yeah.
And sometimes I talk to the mayor, um, here in the near future, we need to take into consideration of looking at that rate study that Kyle, uh, Brickinridge had presented to us and get started with that. That's, especially in the wastewater side, um, with the project being eight million dollars now. And then to show that we're starting to reserve, we need to get started on that rate increase. And I, I'm thinking it, it's like about twelve percent rate increase overall. So, um, I want you to think about that, how you wanna implement that to our customers. If you wanna do it in a, a two-year process or three-year, um, I don't think I'd wait three years on it because we're gonna need to be showing, um, increasing revenue here to be able to get that plant started, to be able to get that loan money from me and RC.
When that's, looking at our rates with what's going on, and I know everyone feels their water bills too high anyway, but we're, we're comparable or beating most smaller communities around that are comparable to us. And when they, when they average out that number, our numbers, we're missing out on funding because our number's not high enough essentially.
And I, I, I think this is an avenue for the government, you know, when this Act six oh five got pushed, you know, requiring a rate study for all water systems is to get the rates in line, um, so they won't have to borrow so much money, get loans. They'll have that revenue there built up to do small projects and get, be able to complete those without, uh, putting the system in jeopardy, the water or wastewater system.
It'd be great to be at a point where we can add infrastructure without having to take out bonds.
I would too.
Listen.
It would save our customers a, a lot of money down the road.
Be ahead of the curve.
Every one day.
We're a long way down the road.
It is a dream.
Gotta start somewhere.
Okay.
Thank you, Raymond.
Greenbrier went up thirty cents.
They went up thirty?
Alright.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen. Brian Williams?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey?
No.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jack Paul?
No.
Kyle Mark?
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen has passed. The other thing we have on the agenda was the, the bid for the repairs to the city center. We have not taken any action on that yet. We only got the one bid. And I didn't know if you wanted to take any action on that at this time or you just want me to leave it as an unfinished business and put it on next month's agenda?
I can vote to table it.
We, we, it's not, it's not anything that we need to make a motion on tonight, right? So we don't need to table it, but I, I would prefer that we have the mayor here and have more information.
I could have Mr. Woodham here as well to kind of explain the project and what we're...
Okay.
Yes.
So you want me to request that he comes next month maybe?
Please him.
Yeah, and he wasn't, the way I understood it, he wasn't sure exactly the cost because he's hoping once he gets in there, it may not be as much as what he estimated it to be. But I will contact him and see if he'll be available for that. Okay, um, we're down to reports and I know, um, Mayor Hester wanted to praise our fire department. I think they have some news that they'd like to share and most of you may already know it. But, um, Chief Tolliver, if you would like to come forward and kind of explain some of your, your good things that's happening?
We're, uh, getting on track, doing pretty good. Uh, I do have something to hand out to all of y'all. I know Danny said he was... There should be one for everybody. So what this is that I'm giving y'all right now, we've been awarded the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant for thirty-five thousand and sixty dollars to purchase new battery-operated vehicle extrication equipment. It'll be a cutter, spreader and a ram. Remember last year, we were talking about it during the budget meeting? Well, we were awarded this grant, uh, a couple of weeks ago. But this is their, I mean, their press release that they give. I believe they only take the first six hundred applicants and we've applied three times, four times now and we're awarded. So that's big news for us, getting some new tools to replace twenty, thirty-year-old tools. Next thing was we were awarded at the OEM Chiefs meeting the other day, we were awarded a Fire Department of the Year for twenty twenty-two, an appreciation of dedicated service and the cooperation with the Faulkner County Office of Emergency Management awarded that the other day.
Congratulations on that.
Thanks.
Congratulations. You guys earned it.
Uh, another thing for y'all. Start.
I know you're gonna answer my question.
Hey, you gotta get the good news out and then, then... The good stuff next. Uh, what this is, I'm just needing permission to purchase some fire hose to outfit the ladder truck when it gets here. We received a date that it's supposed to be completed the first week of February. So this is thirteen hundred foot of three-inch supply line and six hundred foot of inch and three-quarter tack line. I asked an angel's approval for the eight thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars to purchase the hose.
Is this something that was, that we budgeted for this year?
No. So I talked to Dale about it and last year and he said we're still good. We also, we're still operating off of our approved budget, but we did get the rate increase that y'all approved last month. No, no buckets. Trying to get everything good to go.
Obviously, we can, this will be on next month, we can put this on next month's agenda.
I just needed y'all's approval to go ahead and order it with us, having the truck mid-February.
Oh, we can do that next month?
Yeah.
If it's an emergency, I mean, because we don't have an ordinance.
Yeah, I have to order it and it's about six to eight weeks. I'm just trying to order it since the mayor's spending was cut down.
Will we need an ordinance or can we do it by resolution?
You can do it by just voice vote.
I just need the okay to order it.
Unless, unless these folks need, uh, something like a resolution, but...
No, they don't. We order from them all the time.
So I make a motion to... Eight thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and a second.
Which this was our cheapest find because same company we ordered from last year. They're up just for the supply line, it was almost eleven thousand dollars. So the cost of everything's gone up. But that was it, the extrication department of the year is all I had.
Thank you, Chief Tolliver.
Yep, thanks.
Awesome. Okay.
Congratulations.
Do we need to take a voice vote on that motion that he made?
Um, I'll just go ahead and do a roll call on that. Brian Williams?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jack Paul?
Yes.
Kyle Mark?
Yes.
Okay, um... We have any comments from city council members, anything?
I would like to ask a question, uh, Raymond. Since the mayor's not here for me to ask. I know that the issue that we had a couple of months ago with the water, the tanks, all that, I know that the mayor said he was gonna talk with you and/or others in the city or in the commu, in, you know, the business that can maybe give us some, some help or some recommendations or things that we can do to keep that from occurring again in the future. My que, my only question for you is, is that, has there been a conversation started about that at least? And do we have, and, and not that I want a full presentation, but I just wanted the people of the city then, because the people are asking me, hey, are they doing a town hall? Are there, you know, what's, is there any movement on, you know, this happening or preventing this in the future? I just wanna make sure that that ball is rolling in the administration of the city.
We had, um, had scheduled a town hall meet, well, didn't have it scheduled, but we're looking to have a town hall meeting tomorrow night. But due to this weather here, we decided to move it next Thursday possibly, I think.
Okay.
Uh, what the mayor had told me yesterday.
Okay, well, I would like if you would have the water department, the, the, the young ladies that run the front office, make sure that they use that, that notification system to let everyone in the city know about the town hall.
They've gotten more updated on that, especially with the, the school, um, notification system there too.
I just wanna make sure anyone in our water district has, has a voice here if they want to...
The mayor is wanting me and Barbara to also get familiar with that in case they can't make it in. Finding that time of the day is gonna be a task, but we'll try to find time to do that.
The good thing about that system is you can do it from any, anywhere, any computer, you don't have to be...
I'm not too familiar with that process, but I'm sure that it should be pretty...
I know how to use it. I can help you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can know to call on y'all.
You know we'll come work?
I need some help.
You know we'll come work?
So you were wanting, you were wanting us to use it, um, to notify everybody of the town hall meeting?
I would.
Okay.
I would, but for two reasons. I want to make sure everyone in our water district is aware of it because there's a lot of people that don't use social media and especially if it's a week from now, I wanna give people an opportunity and I wanna make sure that all of our citizens on our, in the city and our water district have a voice or if they wanna come here and say something, you know, just, so. But thank you for the update.
One thing I'd like to see is consider as a city council or city government, maybe consider having a campaign encouraging everybody that if you, if your house is on a crawl space or whatever, to go ahead and get that done and, and do a big push.
Yeah.
Because it, because I think at the end of the day, we can have a town hall meeting and we need to, we need to explain it. But we also, I feel like, need to have a campaign encouraging everybody, hey, while the weather's good, let's go ahead and, and prepare for the next one so that we don't...
I would like to try to present something like that in October, September, October.
Right.
You know, get them people aware and get prepared.
Don't you agree with that? That something like that, you know, just...
Yeah, it'd be great, I think.
Well, it takes all of us to fix the problem or keep it from happening. So education on how to protect your property and not, you know, that's, that's number one right there. It's gonna prevent you from having to call in a plumber and replumb your house.
We need to have a town hall. It's, it's, it's important that we do, but I also believe that, that as, as long as everybody understands, it's an effort from everybody. Raymond Arnold didn't cause this and, and I, nobody thinks you did, but I mean, at the end of the day, it takes us all to, to take responsibility for our own home and for the city and for everything else, so.
I was gonna say, Mark, you say that and it would be nice if that were true. But in, in the past month, I've seen a lot of misinformation, even though Mr. Williams did a great job of putting out information, trying to keep people abreast of the situation. But there are still people who think that it was an infrastructure problem on our end, on, on the city's end that caused the water shortage, uh, the days following Christmas and the hard freeze. And Raymond, correct me if I misspeak here, there was not any issues on our side, correct?
No major issues.
No major issues on our side.
Now, we had some minute leaks, you know, real minute leaks. Like, uh, we repaired them after we got finished with our disaster, little disaster there. It was like one thirty-second leak, you know, and smaller. These were minute...
It wasn't?
Nothing.
It wasn't with the volume of water?
Nothing that would cause us to run out of water. It, it would, it would take a, a two-inch line, um, along with the customers using, force the drop even faster. Now, the year before, uh, that ice storm we had then, that freeze there, we had a six-inch line that was busted on Highway three sixty-five. It depleted our tanks really quick. We was out a few more days on water there and getting that, got that repaired, you know. But I think this process, this time, it went really smooth, uh, for us in, in the field and, and got our customers back in service and it, a little bit more... And, and got our customers back in service in a, a little bit more timely manner.
You've talked before about, um, replacing meters with digital meters, is that right? Didn't I hear you?
We're in, we, yeah, we've been in the process, uh, since, uh, 2021, replacing all of our, well, not replacing them, but, uh, new services will have the new, uh, cellular endpoint. You'll see a little charge on your account there of 89 cents, what they charges for each month for that cellular endpoint.
When that happens and we ever run it, as that, as time goes on and we've got those on more and more, will you be able to tell more accurately? Okay, we got, we've got something, a problem here there.
To, you know, read those meters in a more timely manner, we wouldn't have to go out in the field and read them. We could just read them right there at the office, you know, but, uh.
Well, and I'm glad that you brought the meters up because I know, so I have one at my home. Um, and I downloaded that app and I can actually look at my water usage like hourly. I can go back, see hourly how much water I use in my home. And looking at it, it tells you how much you use a day.
Yeah.
Um, and when you look at it that way, water is extremely inexpensive when you think of what you use a day. It's like $2 a day. I mean, you know, it's not as much as you think it is. Anyway, that's a side note. Well, would we ever be able to upgrade our existing meters to that system? Like, let's say a customer.
Doing that, now, now, a lot of our CE meters, which is the first radio remeters we got, the batteries are dying. But my problem is that Badger is way behind on getting our supply to us.
The meters.
Of newer, new meters.
Of the new meters.
Mm-hmm.
So is this something that the city would?
Saying meters, we're talking about just the registers and the endpoint is all we're changing now.
Okay.
Cause the meter body itself.
So this, the meter stays there, you just add an electronic device to it to make this, okay. So that device that we wanna add to these meters, is that something that the city would install or something that we would, that we would pay for to get done?
Right now, we've got 100 and, I think, Chris told me we had 100, we got 180 of them to replace. I've had meter, I've had these registered orders since, um, August of last year.
So you have some on order that aren't in?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I was gonna, my next.
I order some every month.
Oh, okay.
Just to be, try to get ahead. I'm still waiting for my August order, 2022.
Okay, cause my next question was gonna be if a customer wanted, could they buy it and have you put it on for them? Okay, but you're, you're having trouble getting them just to replace the ones that you have now.
Badger is just way behind.
Well, and Raymond, I'm sure manpower is gonna be an issue there too. You, you've got openings right now and there's a, uh.
Yeah, it's gonna take some manpower, a little extra manpower there to get all those changed out. Me and Chris was talking about that today. Um, and maybe we're, if we don't, uh, get some more manpower soon, that we just have to do it on the weekends, you know? We're, we're not distracted having to go do other things. It'll give us more time and a, a full day to be, to do that on a Friday and a Saturday, you know, and get those chains out. I figured just in a couple of weekends, we could have all those changed out or maybe possibly one weekend with everybody if they could make it in. You know, they may have something else scheduled, but, um, but my first order that is 50. And then my next month, I ordered 100. Then I ordered 100 meters because my meter supply has gotten low. I still haven't no, received any of that, so, um, here, probably tomorrow, I'll order another 100 of the registers.
Till they start coming in, that'd do much good, I guess.
And I, I'm hoping they don't send it all, they're just holding it, you know? I meant to call Hunter today and find out about that. I don't want them holding that, you know, waiting till they get my order completely filled. I needed them to ship that out soon as they get that order filled.
We appreciate you, Raymond.
Thank you, Raymond.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do we have any other comments from anybody? Chief Hunter, did you have? No, okay. Yes, um, just a reminder of the financial interest statements. I think you all received their due, I believe.
Week from today.
A week from today, so. Just, you know. Bring it.
You can download it, I mean, it's, 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 it's uniform, it's just, and for most people, it's just the front section is all you fill and the rest is just not applicable.
Is it on the county website or?
Secretary of State, maybe, Arkansas Ethics would have, just, just Google. It's called Statement of Financial Interest, so just Google Arkansas Statement of Financial Interest and turn it in to Barbara is all.
Right, it's, it stays at city hall and your signature is notarized. If you come in, Crystal's a notary, she can notarize it or if you, you can get it notarized before you drop it off. But, um, our next city council meeting is Tuesday, February the 28th. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 21st. It's gonna be the third Tuesday and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'll say.